Welcome to the, to the second part of our program, which has to do with candidates for school board. There are two, it's Maria Rodriguez and Brian Tarbuck, right? And they are both running for school board. We're going to follow the same format. I'll give them each a couple of minutes to introduce themselves and tell you why that they would like to undertake this great adventure. And then we have a few standard questions, questions from the audience, questions from the online, if you wish, those of you who are online. And maybe take, I don't know, 30, 45 minutes, whatever you want to take to discuss. Whatever you need to know to be able to make an informed decision about candidates for school board. Okay?
Okay.
I will try to alternate who starts. As I pointed out before, it's hard to know who starts because questions get answered in sequence. So why don't you, Marie, why don't we start with you and you can tell us about yourself and why this is important to you?
How do I turn this on?
Should be on.
Oh, well, perfect. Okay, Marie Rodriguez, I have lived in Reedfield for 23 years. Originally from Oregon, but I only lived there 18 years before I joined the Navy. So I am a Navy veteran. I was a corpsman and used my GI Bill to go to school. Met my husband in the Navy and he used his GI Bill to go to medical school. Because I always said I was going to marry a doctor, even if I had to make him one. So at least we were set on that one. And medical school was paid for by the Army and so I was an Army spouse for a number of years. Had four boys while we were in the Army. And well, deployments got a lot, so we decided to look for another place to go. And being from Oregon and seeing this town was like Nirvana, a small town, a wonderful community. And what a great place for my boys to grow up. I would say they've been free range kids. So work experience, I worked as a nurse in ICU for a number of years. And then I took a little hiatus as my children were growing up. And once they all got into school here, I worked as a nurse sub for Morana Cook and also Winthrop Schools. And I said, there is something outside ICU that I like. And because of that experience, I was hired at Kent Hill School as one of the two school nurses. I worked there for 10 years. And that's where I really understood that the collaboration between nursing, students, family, and the educators was so, so important in order to really understand and help the students in educational achievement and as well as emotional achievement. And you know how difficult that was the last couple of years with COVID. So that's one of the reasons I'm, I'm running for school board. I, I love the kids. I want to see academic success. And I think we've got good schools, but I think we need to keep an eye on it and make sure it stays a good school.
Okay, thank you, Marie. Brian?
Hey, I don't know if this is angle the right way. My name's Brian Tarbuck. I graduated from Morana Cook 35 years ago. I've lived in this area more or less ever since, apart from 19 months when I was out west in Washington. Now just north of Oregon. That was a great experience. I married a girl that I met at Morana Cook. My kids go to Morana Cook now. I got a sophomore and, and a seventh grader. When my seventh grader graduates, he'll graduate 40 years, more or less to the day after I graduated. So my son, my son, don't go well, but it looks like he's on track to do that. My day job, I'm general manager of the Greater Augusta Utility District. You see when you go to Augusta over on the right-hand side of the road, there's a watershed area that the utility owns. And we've made that available to folks here in town and the town has been great about using that. We have nice trails out there now. As a result, I've served, I serve on several different boards, New England boards, state boards and local boards. And those include two here in Reedfield. One is the road committee that we just talked about. And the other was a broadband committee that went on for about two years. So it was interesting to learn a lot about all those different pieces of work here in town. And believe that I have the skills, credentials and demeanor to serve you all on the school board. And happy to do that for you if you'd allow me to do so.
Okay, thank you. So I'll ask you a few questions that we've set up ahead of time. And certainly the audience is welcome to participate at any time and online. If you have questions, so you can type them in and we'll try to make sure that they get read and answered. So the first question was, in, in your desire to personally desire to be on the school board, do you have some goals that you would like to see your work produce some kind of result? Is there something specific about the schools that you feel passionate about that you'd like to see moved in a particular direction? And we'll start, I started with you before, so we'll start with Brian this time.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many, so many things. It's hard to, it's hard to pick one. But I would say having kids in school is very different than before we had kids in school. And when your kids graduate and move on, you get disconnected pretty quickly. And it's hard then to see that the investment you're making in your taxes is getting some kind of return. Unless you go to a school play, unless you go to a football, soccer game, or a math meet for that matter. So I think communicating what the school board's up to in a way that folks can easily understand is very important. And that would be probably my number one goal is to try to make sure that that communication line was open and clear and folks understood.
Okay, thank you, Marie. Something you'd like to see your efforts achieve?
I want to make sure there's academic success for all of the students. I know that with the COVID lockdown, there was some learning time lost. I want to assure that students that were left behind, that are there behind, that there's a system put in place in order to catch students up, because we're talking about a lot of these students getting ready to go off to college. And we have to get to the basics. And we have to instill those and build on their, them as they're going through. And I think that we lost a lot of the basics, because if we look at most of the students that missed in class time, we're talking about first, second grade and those that should be in maybe 11th grade now. So it's imperative that we make sure that we're doing the best that we can for these students.
Okay, so if there was one thing that you see challenging the school, maybe related to what you just said or not, that you would like to champion, let's say that you felt you could make a difference in where it was going. What would one thing be to you that you'd like to see, other than maybe the things you've already discussed, that you'd like to see really you feel passionate about, you want to see happen? That, that you can within the scope of the board. I mean, it's obviously it's a board, so you can't do anything yourself.
Jeez, that's, that's a difficult question.
I know, that's why we're here.
I want to make this, the students feel safe and comfortable in the school, both in the physical building as well as being able to communicate between parents and teachers. And of course, sometimes as a health center, that is one of my things that I would like to focus on. So that we can have a well-rounded student when they get out of school. And that by having all of those factors engaged, I think that that gives the students a better chance to succeed and learn how to communicate while they're in a safer environment. And luckily, our schools are small. And so I think that because they're known better, I think that that does help.
Okay, Brian, something that you feel passionate about, that you'd like to see your energy devoted to making a difference?
Yeah, there's, there's two elements of, of what you get out of school. So one is the need to do, you know, we have state criteria, curricula, goals and standards that are set outside of these communities that say you need to do X, Y, and Z. There are safety protocols or health and wellness protocols or all those things that are set outside of our, our, our control. So we're left then with, what are the nice to do things? And the nice to do things are very difficult to fund. One of the other boards I'm on is Morana Cook Education Foundation. And, and that is a good example of a way to take public dollars. If, actually it's all private dollars. We get donations from the community and then teachers will put in for a grant. And say we need a thousand dollars to put in a, my kids are going to make a bunch of birdhouses or something. And we say, all right, we'll have $500. You come up with the other 500, kids raise the money, we provide matching funds. They have a project that works. Extrapolating beyond that is the need really for an alumni association to fund these bigger capital projects that the towns just simply can't afford. It's a nice to have, be great to have a turf field, for example, you could use it more. But yeah, if there's a way to help forward those kinds of goals, so that the school board takes care of those things that are necessary and that we find a better conduit for philanthropy from outside, that would be great if we could pull that off.
Okay, if you were thinking about technology, we've talked before in this room about the importance of technology as a driver for Reedfield, actually. So in the school system, is there some technology that needs to be the focus of the curriculum to help kids down the road? Technology. Start with Brian.
So I went to engineering school. I'm a nerd. I'm sorry. I, I used to have to really apologize for it, but now it's, it's a little better. Just, just a little. The, yeah, the schools are actually have pretty good technology, as it turns out. And again, if you don't have kids that go there, you'd be surprised to see kids show up with iPads. And they do a lot of work and unfortunately, so much of that work had to be done remotely. But fortunately, the technology was allowable, was there and it made that possible. You know, 10 years ago, that wouldn't have been possible at all and it would have been a much different story. But I'd say the school itself has a very robust technology. I think their investments have been sound and they seem to be working well.
Okay, Marie?
Okay, so he's a computer nerd and I'm a novice, but
An Elvis?
A novice.
Oh, novice, okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm always calling my kids, hey, how do I get out of this? But I did get into the back door of CDC, could never do it again, but just so you know, I will do as I can. I think that the technology is very good. At Morana Cook, I had two kids that graduated from there and then two of my kids graduated from Kent Hill. I think we just need to keep up with the times on that. I'm just amazed at how much my children learned and advanced from what they had. And this was a few years ago. So I mean, I think it would be important to keep up with, I'm sure there's someone in charge of technology. I'm going to be learning all these things that could keep us apprised of what the newest and more important things are in school. And I was impressed by how the school managed everything during the COVID when we had online.
That we were able to survive actually through technology.
Thank heavens. I mean, if we hadn't had that, it'd been 15 years ago or so, 20 years.
Somebody got a, you want to sit, my mother used to, my mother used to sit on her phone when it did that.
I like the music.
So you've got my attention. Anyone in the audience have a question at the moment? Go ahead.
We have a question about technology. I used to be a tech lecturer of a large school district and I have a business here in town. The question I have is, I was at a meeting today where the focus, the focus was on security. It's getting worse every single day with people taking over your systems. Actually making mess in your particular system is one of the many, many things that happens. My concern is, and I'm not sure if you know, how, how would you deal with it? They have your entire network taken over ransom with a huge cost to get it back. And I'll tell you, it can happen any day, anytime.
Cause let me, let me just see if we can get that question. Okay, so the question has, question has to do with security of systems. Basically, computer systems and data systems are not necessarily the physicals, security of the school. And did I start with you last time? I don't think so. We'll start with Marie. So the question, just for the people online, the question has to do with security of systems and how to protect against attacks from the outside. Okay?
Well, I hate to say, but I think I would have to listen to whoever's in technology to give us an explanation of how we can secure it. I, I know there's some securities in place, but you're right. It's a concern everywhere in any community nowadays about taking it over and then ransoming to get back. I don't, I don't know. That would be something very important to discuss, I think, in the future.
Yeah, so in my day job, we run a water sewer stormwater utility in Augusta. So it's not a matter of when we get ransomware hit, or not a matter of this, if, it's just when. I mean, so our plans for that, I have, you know, offsite backups and make sure we have rolling complex passwords. We have training to try to make sure that nobody clicks the wrong link and expedites a virus or something that can open up a back door and then we're subject to ransomware. But if we are, then it's just a matter of preparedness and roll out the backups and go. We've been working a lot in the last six months with the cybersecurity infrastructure, a security agency to address those very concerns. And I don't know if those same things are available to the schools, but my presumption is that something similar is and that they'd have taken those steps to try to mitigate that kind of risk. But it would seem to be if you got ransomed, you wouldn't pay the ransom, you don't negotiate with terrorists kind of thing. Light up your backups and hopefully they all work and you're, you're back online quickly.
Other questions?
The answer is yes, there are government people who are coming and helping set up and do that. Maybe something they want to pursue if you're a member.
Okay, the comment was that there are in fact outside resources available to help plan and protect against external attacks. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
There's been a huge question for academics. Or in, in the council, we have a class and all the names of all of the students. And we have an industrial law book. I really would like to see, what would you do to help to implement trades? The trade schools, there's, there's technicality. Firstly, get primary classes done as opposed to paying re-callers fees. And secondly, as a, as a local doctor, we, we trade people, electricians, workers, etc. Would you help them for that trades?
So, so the question is to create a balance and a pathway for all students. How would you balance and encourage the ability of students to not only have a college pathway, but a trades or vocational pathway that was leading to a success for them? We'll start with Brian.
So as I understand it, Catty's been available for a number of years. That's the school that other schools participate in over in Augusta. One of my good friends in town is an electrician and he learned his trade there. We're struggling all the time to find people who can drive dump trucks, backhoes, excavators, operate wastewater treatment plants. The need for people without college degrees is extremely high. And not everybody needs a college degree. Not everybody wants a college degree. So to the extent you can open up those pathways, it's, it's fantastic. How you do, how you pay for it, that's the, the tricky part. And there again, there might be some folks who need those trades that you can partner up with. And somebody can enter into a carpentry program and they become your apprentice. And then 20 years hence, they hang their shingle up and you, you pass the hammer to them or whatever you do. I will say that some 35 years ago, when, when I was graduating Morana Cook, we, we had a, we had a weight room, a place where you could work out. So we would do that for track or what have you. And it was right next to, at the time, the forestry program and they had a skitter. And these guys all had, they had bar oil all over them and they were the coolest guy, like they were so cool. And we asked them one day, can we drive the skitter? And like, no, you college dorks don't get to drive the skitter. And it was deflating, I have to say, but it was, but it was, it was great because those, those are super cool. But anyway, yeah, absolutely very important to not just focus on college-bound academics.
Okay, Marie?
I most definitely agree also that we need to encourage the students to look at all options. And we need to also have them become aware as well as us and the parents that college is not always the best choice for some students. Trade, trade schools are incredibly wonderful. And if I had known how much like electricians did and what they did, I could not do it. I think sometimes people do tend to think that if you are an electrician or a plumber or any of those types of jobs, working the skitters, that you're not, you're not on the same level with someone that's got a college degree. Well, let me tell you what, if those people weren't out there doing those jobs, I would have to try and do it and you don't want to see that because there is an expertise to all of that. So I think that with college counseling that they have in the schools, they should continue to bring up those kind of options. I think we don't talk about those options as much. I know having worked at Kent Hill, sometimes I had some disagreements with the counselors when they would say, oh, the kids need to go and they would pick all these high-end schools. And especially with some of our foreign students, you know, they wanted all the big name schools. And if they didn't get in, they would be devastated. And I said, you, why don't you sometimes talk to them about, you go to a associate's degree and then you transfer to the school and even some of the students that grades were not good enough, that was an option. Go in and prove yourself and then you can get into it. I mean, from personal experience with my husband, he was told, oh, you just need to go to a trade school. Of course, this was about 45 years ago. And they didn't even offer him an option. He went in the military. And of course, once he graduated med school, his dad presented him to the college instructor and said, well, number one, he was in the military, he went to college. And so we don't want to totally pigeonhole kids, but, and they need to know, you can change, you can have a life change. My husband and I both did. We went into the military, went to school. He became a doctor, I became a nurse. And even with a trade school, it's not a pigeonhole, but it might be a place to start so that you can pay for those other things too. Or it may be your passion and I am glad other people have that patience. Because if I had to lift the hood of a car, couldn't do it, but I do know where the gas tank is.
So let me ask you, changing the subject a little bit, there's a question here about, there's a proposal for a resource officer in the budget for next year. What's your opinion of that concept? We'll start with Marie.
I thought they already had a resource officer of some sort. I was, the discussion, no?
Don't know.
Again, there's a lot that I need to learn and I'm just starting to look all this good stuff up. I've been on the other side. I wish I could tell you more, but anything that's going to help the students while they're in school and for being successful when they get out of school.
Okay, Brian?
That's what I'm for.
Yeah, I think that's a, almost an impossible question for a board to answer. You're sort of damned if you do, damned if you don't. If you say, we don't want a resource officer and the unthinkable happens, everyone's going to point fingers and say, we told you, you should have somebody, you didn't act, that's on you. If you put a resource officer in and that person's the wrong sort, that could also not work very well. I have a good friend of mine who's in New York State. He was a school resource officer and he said his job was really breaking the pathways that people had to get from sort of minor offenses into something that's going to get them in jail and, and turn them around before things got too bad. So I think with the right person, there's loads of opportunity, there are lots of education you can have and a physical security presence, which we read about in the news all the time and everybody's twitchy about, and they should be. So I, I think it's a good idea. I think it's really going to depend on the right person. And we'll just have to wait and see how that works out.
Okay, so I've got a question, another question from online, which Brian, we'll start with you. What can you do to encourage more students to take advantage of free programs to become emergency, emergency medical technicians? Very specific question.
It sure is. And one I know, nothing about. I was happy to get the nerd one.
How about a skitter, a skitter operator?
Skitters, I got some.
So we've got somebody who wants to help kids get in, become EMTs. Is there a pathway for that?
I, I honestly don't know. I would presume that there is. There must be some sort of partnership of local volunteer fire departments desperate to have people. But I think I'm going to take the balance of my time and give it to Marie, who is a public health profession.
Well, I know that you have to take a course and you have to be certified. I was an EMT, became an EMT when I was in the military 100 years ago and I'm sure it's much more stringent now. But that again, I don't know what you would actually label that, maybe. In a way, it's a trade school type of thing to start with. Usually it's a stepping off point in going on to something else or it's your passion to do that. But there are programs out there and we should be able to direct students on how you could follow a path toward that.
Are there any parts of the curriculum that you have concerns about, that you know of? If you, if you know the curriculum at the school, is there a principle about, that's not a good word. Is there, is there an issue about the curriculum that you have any concerns about?
Specific classes or courses?
Anything.
Well, my concern about the curriculum, just in overviewing some of the deficits that we found that occurred during COVID, a lot of schools are down on reading and mathematics, which are two of the, the basic fundamentals. I think that Maine is better than a lot of other places, but it also shows that more toward the eighth grade students, from what I had seen, had a bigger deficit. So I think that we really need to make sure that we get on top of that. We're, there's of course going to be, what is it, NEA testing, the national testing, but not till 24 on that. So that's too long. I know Maine does have some testing and they've shown a slight deficit. But we need to check each student individually and make sure that they're where they should be, at their appropriate grade level.
Okay, Brian?
I went to school to be an engineer, so you had a nerd. I would, I would say, you know, science, those kinds of things that are going to, that we really, really need help on globally, nationally, to try to understand the world better as it changes. I've heard from some of the faculty at, at Morana Cook that they wish to be a little stronger on the science side. So that's, that's a nice observation. What can the board do to facilitate that interest? I don't know. And to Marie's point, I think it's, it's well-known that, that COVID is a, is an awful blow for all those kids who had to go through it, whether you missed the state championship basketball game or, or had to graduate on Zoom. I mean, these things are, these things are very sad. But there's a lot of kids who, who suffered. And I think through the standard process of testing children, seeing how they did on the test and then targeting those weak spots, testing them again and seeing if those corrections you made to curricula, hopefully that helps make some improvements.
Questions over here, sir, in the back?
Sean Roberts, I'm full disclosure, I've been on the school board now for nine years, so I'll ask this question. There has been some recent talk due to the budget increases about school consolidation. What are your thoughts on that?
And the question has to do with thoughts about school consolidation. Are you talking about multiple towns? Okay, school consolidation in our district. We'll start with Brian.
Yeah, that's, that's really interesting because my, my head's spinning a little bit about, as I, as I understood, some years ago, there was some concern in Wayne and some, something about, and I'm going to get the word wrong, Sean, I apologize for that. It's like a, the charter that, that forms the, the school district that the town has to vote to get out. So if Wayne wanted to shut down its elementary school, for example, That the town has to vote to get out. So if Wayne wanted to shut down its elementary school, for example, and consolidate with something else, the whole town would have to say. We don't want this nice little elementary school we have anymore. And the odds of that happening. Zero. But is there some idea behind, let's say, you know, Reed Field Elementary is a really old school. Could you find some cost benefits by moving a newer version of that school by the middle school and high school? Are there transportation savings, lunch savings, those kinds of things? I, I don't know, but I mean, this whole, this whole plan that we've had for. Gosh, almost, almost sixty years now is to try to pool everybody's resources. Can't all do it on our own. And it's been a successful experiment over this long period of time. So. Yeah, there, there could very well be ways to do that, but I'd be interested to see more specifics about. What those savings might be and what the detriments might also be that would make parents very concerned about any of those changes.
Marie.
Yeah, um, yeah. I think there needs to be a little more information about why. They want to consolidate. And again, is it cost effective and also educationally, are we going to increase class size? That's one thing that I think we can be proud of in Maine, that most schools are smaller. And I think that that gives more individual attention to each student. So I would certainly hate to see them to just. Move from one school to another. I mean, maybe if you close down a couple of schools and build up another one, but this probably isn't the time to think about that either with the. Economic situation.
Any other questions? We're going to come to an end here pretty soon, but I'd like to make sure we get all the questions in the back. So the question is, do you have thoughts about training teachers to carry firearms in the school? If that were to be state law?
Well, that's, that's a difficult question. And again, I grew up in Oregon and in the mornings you'd come in, you'd find the gun rack with the rifles in the back of the truck. Times are different now. The kids go hunting before, after school. I think the one thing we need to do is probably not just say that the school is a gun free zone. I mean, that's like advertising. But I. Don't really see a problem if the teacher truly wants to be trained. But there's a lot of things to consider with that. Are we going to have a concealed carry? Are there going to be guns locked in a certain location? I think it's something that needs to be discussed and we need to discuss it with the families. How do they feel about it? I think in our unique situation, we do need awareness that violence is increasing in schools. But so far, knocking on wood, it's not been a big problem for us, but we need to keep an eye on it.
Right.
Yeah, that's. I would, I would say no, based on my personal experience with a certain teacher in my high school used to throw chalk at us with blinding accuracy. And giving them anything more powerful than chalk would have been a bad, bad idea. I, I think, I think that while the idea is sound, that you have a more defensible. Community that the law enforcement people that, that I know and that we work with through our work. That's basically all they do. They're, they're not also trying to teach geometry. So. I, I think on the face of it, I would, I would say, no, that's not a great idea, but I also agree that it's certainly worth. Having a lively discussion about vis a vis the school resource officer, providing some of that peace of mind that. Maybe that's what that bill intends to provide.
So you have a question about how you get a request to be on a book from the library. What would you recommend process be to deal with that? Since you like hard questions.
You know, it's funny because I asked, I was talking to my wife about this before. What did I say if I? I saw Shakespeare. I really didn't like Shakespeare, so I went to engineering school, so I wouldn't have to ever read. And I asked him at the interview, do I have to read? No, you don't have to. Do this. I, I think that's an incredibly difficult and very site specific question that if there were a book that were deemed so offensive. That it needed to be removed, that there again, there should be a, a robust conversation about it. I'd also posit that, you know, the internet's available to pretty much everybody and. There's bound to be much worse things on the internet for children to get a hold of than there is a specific textbook, but. It does seem to be a slippery, difficult slope to proceed down. When you start saying this, this particular novel is inappropriate versus that one. And, and it would take a lot of conversation, I think, to, to go that pathway.
Marie, you had time to think about that one. Sorry.
Yeah, um, I believe with some of the books in schools that are not. That are sexually explicit. We should have parents in on the discussion. It depends on the grade, emotional maturity and what the content of it is. And I don't really like the word banning the book from the school library because we're not really banning of. The book. They just aren't going to have it in the school library where. Sometimes if the younger students get it, they don't understand. They're just looking at pictures or taking it out of context. And if it's something that is not. Age appropriate, it probably shouldn't be in that library unless the parents get together, look at the book and decide. I mean, we all want what's best for our children. And we do know because usually when we talk about banned books, we are talking about sexually explicit books. So if that's the case, we need to review those books and we need to say. It's not going to be in this school because these kids are too young to understand this context. We're talking on the other end, high school. Well, perhaps it is more appropriate that they can look. And see, because they're probably talking about it behind the bleachers anyway. But again, it's the parents. We are in charge of raising our children in conjunction with the teachers and we need to be able to speak up. And let them know what we think is in the best interest of our children. They are there for academics. And yes, sex is academics to a degree.
So the question is, how would you, as a school board member, build consensus among your peers and the families? With respect and the parents, with respect to issues that come up that affect a broader group of people? Start with Marie.
Well, communication is important. I mean, I would definitely have my phone number and. Email available and anything that comes up, it can come up for discussion, of course, with the. With the school board. And I think that. It's really hard because there are so many hot button issues out there today. But I think that. The communication is the important thing. I mean, I haven't walked into the schools and talked to teachers and said, what do you think is a difficulty? What do you think is good? And I know there'll be diverse opinions, but I think that's one thing that a school board member should do. Talk to the teachers as well as. Talk to the parents and that puts some onerous on the parents. You need to make sure that if you're concerned about something, that you bring it up. And it's our job to then bring it to the board so. They can say yea or nay, and we need to get back and say, why is it yea or nay? Or come into those meetings and say, this is important because there are so many things in education now that. It's right on the borderline. Is it in education or is it just a personal opinion?
Right.
I think it, I think at the end of the day, you have to look at. The school is one of your biggest investments. It's also, it's one of your business. It's, it's a tremendous expense to the town, every town. And it's our biggest expense. It's our biggest investment in Reed Field by far. And the board itself has to make sure that the policies and procedures laid out by the superintendent and the staff that report back to them. Follow all the state guidelines, follow all these complex funding. Regulations that they have to, have to meet and. You have to roll up your sleeves and you have to disagree with your seatmates, your neighbors and say, I, I don't like this and here's why. And then hopefully they'll listen to you and say, all right, I didn't see that point of view. And then they say, well, I don't like your point of view and here's why. And you work together to. Solve those problems. And that's what we teach in school. So I think it kind of comes full circle. Our schools are building our future neighbors. It's, it's very important that we find ways to de-escalate and resolve conflict in, in a sensible, polite way. You may not like what somebody says or how they say it, but it's up to you and how you react to it. And it would seem to me that the school board would. Would be a place where. That would be of paramount importance.
Questions on the side, sir. So the question is, what's the role and oversight of the health, would you call it? Healthcare advisory committee and the work of that committee in the schools? Or do you know anything about that? We'll start with Marie.
No, I. I didn't know there was such an animal. My concern is with some of the health center policies and I'm sure some of those have changed when I was there. I. When I was subbing, I, I did have parents some call, sometimes call and say. Well, I wanted my child to be able to see, be seen at the health center by the nurse or the doctor so they could do a strep test or that type of thing. And I think that's wonderful. We live out and about. Parents work far away. We should be able to do the basic tests and also give information of they're going to need to go to the doctor, get a prescription or the campus. I think they have a doctor or a nurse practitioner that comes once a week, but they said they wanted to opt out of the birth control part as a parent. And I, I understood that, but I said, I will tell you because of federal law, you can't opt out of the birth control portion. If you opt into the health center, you opt into all of it. I do believe that because. It's a school and if the child is under eighteen. We don't let them go out and get tattoos. We won't let them get their ears pierced without. I think the parents need to be involved.
So you, you, your, your response is just to clarify what you said. It was to have some parental engagement in the oversight of any process that he's been describing.
Right. I, I do believe and, and with the teachers, they need to know. I'm, I see it a little differently being a nurse. Because I know that even just taking birth control is not completely innocuous. I want to make sure that students are aware, parents are aware. I've heard of students. That have been on birth control and throw a blood clot and they die. Okay, that does happen.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the specifics. I want to try and keep this at the policy level.
I, I do believe that with this subcommittee, there should be oversight with the nurse.
Right.
Because the nurse is bound by her Hippocratic oath or his. And so there should be some getting together and discussing these things that are going on. I don't think.
Let me just move on because I don't want to run out of time here, but Brian, any thoughts on the role and oversight of a committee like that?
Yeah, just, just again, I was on the, the rope. It's not a great analog, but it's the best I got. Is on the, the road committee and the broadband committee and all we would do was provide advice to the broader authority. Which of course is here in town, the select board. A subcommittee of the school board would do the same thing. I think that the question is if there's some question about what kind of conversations are having at those levels. Then that's something that the select, the, the school board should listen to and then respond to accordingly. But an advisory committee doesn't have any voting power at all. And then those votes that would come to the broader. School board would have to be vetted in the light of day, public, you know, motion second vote, the whole, the whole thing. So I think it just comes back to the need for. Concise, clear communication so that people don't make up their own narratives out of lack of better information.
Anybody else? Question, the question is about the grading system of the school, if it's possibly going to be changed, what would be your view? Start with Brian.
Yeah, I guess I don't have a strong opinion on that. You've got to adopt some sort of metric one way or another. I think though the guy, that gets important when you have students are competitive and they're gauging. They're gauging their performance against a classmate and they want to be first or, or second or third, what have you. So if you take that away from them, that's not okay. I don't know how it works for. Colleges to say, you know, what's my GPA? The college I went to didn't have GPAs at all. So it's a weird thing and I'm so glad they didn't. But anyway, sorry that, anyway, it's, there's, there's pros and cons, but yeah, I think you've got to have some kind of, some kind of metric. And I'd be curious to see why someone would want to change what you have for something better. There may be really good reasons for it, or there may just be. No good reasons for it, in which case you stay satisfied. Well, right.
Well, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, especially at this time, because we're, the country is mostly A, B, C, D, E. And it gives us grade points. What supposedly, if you get a one, nobody will get a one because nobody's perfect. So what, what does two, three and four translate when you are applying to a college and they still do go by GPAs? And I just think that if it also, you said, gets rid of valid, valedatorians and all that good stuff. I don't think that we should be jealous of people. That do better because some people are always going to do better. Someone's going to be up there. We will reward teachers for excellence. We should reward students for excellence also. That doesn't mean the other student is stupid. We go along and we tell them as they're going through school what they're doing well and help them to do better. But I do think that we still need to, we are a competitive society. We need competition and if for no other reason, so that we can learn to be respectful of each other if someone is. Getting better grades or doing better in something. Applaud each other, encourage each other instead of putting down those that. Are the nerds.
Nerds, thank you. Okay. So last question, you're in the hall and the family comes in and the parents come up to you as a school board member. They say, oh, this is an interesting school. I'm thinking of moving to this community. What would you say? Start with you.
I'd say great.
What would you, what would you tell them about the school that would make you, them feel like they made a good decision?
I think that the size of the class is incredible. It's wonderful. My kids. My two oldest went to schools elsewhere and the classes were a lot bigger. I think it's really nice. I think you get more individualized attention. These teachers, for the most part, know more about the students. I feel that they do. I feel that they do collaborate a lot more than other schools with families. And so they rely on the family to help guide them on what the difficulties are. And because they're the educators, they're the ones that suggest alternatives. I had one of my, my children that didn't, wasn't doing well in school. And you know, we talked about what the difficulties were, what was going on, and we worked out a plan. I mean, they told, they told me my son, according to testing, was borderline mentally retarded. It's Benjamin who works at the Sexton. And he graduated from college with a history degree, soon called Magna Crummadi. So he did pretty well. So look at the difference it made because of this. So this is such a great school. These teachers are really dedicated for our students. They love Reed Field. It's a great town to grow up in. I would say, go for it. You'll be very happy.
Right. And what would you say?
Yeah, I guess I agree. I can't really think of much in the way of negatives. People had asked, you know, from other towns, you had soccer and whatever. They, yeah, what, how do you like, how do you feel? Honestly, you couldn't get a better education at the elementary school. The elementary school is old. It's the same elementary school my wife went to and it's, but it's really a testament to the investment that folks have made in that campus over all these years that it's still there and we haven't needed a new one. It, and, and you know, there isn't, I'm hard pressed to find anybody that I've met over the past number of years who isn't just professional, polite, kind, really cares. I, I, I don't have a, another analog, but the, we could live in a lot of different places. We live here primarily for that reason. So I, I could vote with my feet if I wanted to, but I voted with my butt and I stayed. I like to retract that last comment.
Okay, so you can wrap up two minutes if you want. Why would people want to choose one of you over the other just to get this wrapped up? So Brian, you get to start.
That's, that's a great, that's a great question. I, I'm at a point now in, in my working career where I have a little bit of time. I have the kids that are in the school right now and I have that granular perspective to meet teachers, meet coaches, be really engaged in everything they're doing in the community. And, and for that reason, I feel like I have a pulse on what's happening. I, I feel like I'm a guy who can get along with almost anybody and I'm, I'm happy to put in the work to learn more about how to make the, the school better for everybody. So that, that's it.
Thank you, Marie.
Well, I'm kind of in the same position. I, I'm just part time at Kinsale. And well, I just love the combination of the students, the school, medical, health part of it. And I want to see these kids thrive. And I want to make sure that we don't just stay the same, that we get better because there's so many places that I'm hearing about the education, educational environment in big cities especially. That it's not focused on the student. It's not focused on the basics. And I want to make sure that every student has a good foundation, not only in education, but also because we're close and we're small. I want to have that communication with all of the parents and the teachers and the students involved. And listen to what is really a concern and go where we need to go to meet the academic and the emotional in the future for these children so that they can go on and do great things and we can say, and they came from Reed Field.
Well, thank you for your time and effort and interest in the schools. It's wonderful to be here. Thank you all. Thank you.